Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I'll declare the meeting open. I'll advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to be being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individuals during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Wanneroo people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders, past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. Tonight, we are joined by Pastor Wayne Kembray of Cessnock City Church, who will lead us in prayer. Please come forward Pastor Kembray. Councillors, please stand.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor Jay and Councillors. It's a beautiful thing to acknowledge the love of God. He loves us all, he wants all of us to be, have wisdom and to see the city and everything the city blessed. That's the purpose and the heart of God. It's where to pray that God will give us wisdom and agreement to work together for the good of the city. He has a good plan for Cessnock. He did ninety-five years ago and he brought revival to this city. And he can do it again and we can see things thrive. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your love, your grace and your wisdom. We thank you as we come together. We ask, Lord, you'd help us to understand the thoughts that you have given us, that your plan will come to pass in this meeting tonight and that, Lord, your blessing would be upon the Hunter Valley, upon every business and every area, schools and children, whatever, Lord, that the prosperity of the blessing of God come. We ask, we believe, we receive, we thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name, amen. I believe the best is yet to come, truly. The Cessnock, it's yet to come.
Thank you Pastor Kembray. Before we move on to apologies, I just want to make a brief statement in relation to following some events at the last meeting. I understand, especially at this time as we head during to council elections, that many councillors may be passionate on matters and have opposing views which can lead to spirited debate. I want to encourage all councillors to be able to contribute freely and the code of meeting practice sets out speaking time. So I encourage everyone to use their speaking time to make the points that they wish to raise during this debate. Please focus on the matters under discussion and where possible, ask questions in advance to allow full responses to be provided. Please show respect for other speakers and do not interrupt or have side discussions when others are speaking. I only want to enforce the code of meeting practice procedures as they are and when required as necessary. And I think this will help ensure the smooth flow of the meeting. We'll now move on to the receipt of apologies. There's been a leave of absence request approved for councillor Dunn. We have a leave of absence request from councillor Jackson, who has put one in, I believe actually it was only for tonight. For the two weeks? Okay, yeah. And councillor Alson from the seventeenth of July through to the thirteenth of September. Someone happy to move those ways? The councillor Sanders, seconded councillor Moore's. No debate, put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Confirmation of the previous minutes, so we're moving that way. Move councillor Hill, seconded councillor Painter. No debate, we'll put that item, all those in favour, unanimous. Are there any disclosures of interest? Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. I have got two, please. I have WI eighteen slash twenty twenty four, the request for the sponsorship and fee of the posti bikes. Non peculiary interest, as I have an uncle that works on that committee. I have an uncle that takes part in organising this amazing event and I'd like to stay in the chambers as it will not take part in my decision-making progress. Then WI twenty slash twenty twenty four, tender T two zero two four slash fifteen, the CWM landfill extension. Due to family working in the waste apartment, this is an expensive project. As much as it wouldn't affect my decision-making process, I choose to leave the chambers as I believe it's better practice and the residents will see that I'm not here to make my life easier, but I'm here solely to make the Cessnock better for all. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item number WI eighteen twenty twenty four, request for sponsorship and fee waiving Australian Posti Bike Grand Prix. I, James Hawkins, declare a non pecuniary, less than significant conflict for the reasons that I have associations with several members of the Australian Posti Bike Grand Prix Committee. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as the conflict has not influenced me in carrying out my public duty because none of these associations are financial and I hold no committee positions with any of the people involved in this voluntary committee. Thank you.
And I will also declare an interest in report WI eighteen twenty twenty four, request for sponsorship and fee waiving for the Australian Posti Bike Grand Prix. I'll declare a non pecuniary, less than significant conflict for the reason that an associate of mine is a committee member of the Australian Posti Bike Grand Prix. I choose to remain in the chamber and participate in discussion and voting as the conflict does not influence me in carrying out my public duty because this is a volunteer committee running a community event. No other disclosures, any petitions? No petitions, no public address. Consideration and adoption of all reports by inglobo. Someone want to move the list that's put forward on the screen councillor?
Thank you Mayor Saval, sorry. The recommendation that I've read, having read and considered the reports and the agenda related to these items, that GMU seven twenty twenty four, Cessnock City Council Union Picnic Day, CC forty-one twenty twenty four, tender T twenty-four dash two zero two Hyde Plant, CC forty-three slash twenty twenty four, investment report for June twenty twenty four, CC forty-four twenty twenty four, resolutions tracking report, WI eighteen twenty twenty four, the request for sponsorship and fee waiving, Australian Posti Bike Grand Prix. The council adopt the recommendations as printed for those items.
Those items seconded councillor Burke. Okay, no debate, we'll put those items, all those in favour, carried unanimously. We'll now move on to merril minute. I've put forward a merril minute tonight in regards to domestic violence in our community and the worrying trends that we've seen over the last couple of years that's seen a... I'll firstly move the merril minute that's been distributed. Yeah, to talk about the worrying trend that's seen an increase of over forty percent in the offence of domestic violence-related assault and an increase of over sixty percent in the offence of breach of apprehended violence order. This is concerning and any amount of domestic violence in the community is too much. But what is, I think, more concerning is to see that it's actually increasing. And I think we, as an organisation, as a council, should be making sure we're doing our part in helping bring down those levels to zero where they should be. So this merril minute is about offering our assistance to be part of a round table around the event, looking at the development of a domestic and family violence prevention strategy for council, considering what can be done to fast-track development applications for affordable housing to address the shortage of places for people to go that are escaping domestic and family violence and also looking to make sure we provide the correct training to staff around where they can refer people to if they are coming to contact with them in the community that are either suffering homelessness or domestic and family violence. So I'll move that way. Is there any other comments? Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, you went a little bit quicker than what I was ready for. I was happy to see this merril minute. I do have a few questions though, that have arisen from the meeting with councillor Watten and the local charities. I see the subject of toilets has come up in your report. Now, I spoke with Tommy at the last coffee with councillors and put it on the suggestion board then about a twenty-four-seven safe toilet. Is that what you mean in this report?
This report would look at the strategy of what can, developing a strategy about what can be done. I think that has been considered as some other master plans around the locations for twenty-four-hour accessible toilets. I would have to double check, so I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I recall what was discussed around the Apex Park master plan as well in consideration of that location when it was done as a consideration that should that be developed, having a twenty-four-hour accessible toilet there.
Okay, awesome, because that was one of the things that one of the people I spoke to said was that the safe, not having safe toilets, and this was a woman saying how she had been attacked. And the other thing I don't understand, sorry, these mics are really loud and it's putting me off today, is I'm not sure how we can get away with not actually have twenty-four-seven toilets with the fact that it is a fine for public urination. So I think that that's a huge priority that we get the toilets happening. Point one though of the report, I'm just wondering, do you think this will do better than councillor Painter's notice of motion where the minister said we already have showers at Newcastle? Do you think they'll come on board?
So this is around...
Domestic violence, but it is also homelessness, it says domestic violence and homelessness.
Yes.
So that's why I asked.
The round table was more in relation to domestic violence, the homelessness was looking at part of that and part of the reason that people, that's put forward that people don't leave domestic violence situations is because they don't have somewhere safe to go. So we need to look at that as well. But the round table was something that was discussed with me from the Hunter Domestic Violence Consortium. And this is about sort of officially saying to them, yes, council would be happy to be involved in anything that they're doing and we can take the feedback from that to looking at what else we can do in our community.
Okay, good, I just hope the ministers are actually on board because a lot of people end up homeless because of domestic violence. Next question I had was about the affordable housing. As you were saying about fast-tracking that, is the affordable housing what we've been seeing happening around the Cessnock LGA with Sixth Street, South Cessnock and recently in Stevens Street with all the units through Strata? Are we getting more of that housing?
No, affordable housing is a type of housing that is made available at a reduced rate of rental income. So it's up to a certain percentage of income to be taken and it can be any type of housing. It's not a specific type of housing, it's more the concept of making that housing available at the reduced rate for people that can't afford to get into the rental market or the property ownership market.
Thank you. And just lastly, I'm really happy to, again, to see this. I think domestic violence is a massive thing. We've lost people in the South Cessnock LGA because of it. I just find it a little funny, actually, after the last council meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Moore's.
Thank you, Mayor. The domestic violence, I think it involves not just the mayor, but it's every councillor on this board that has, comes across it. And the domestic violence, they should try and find a safe place for these people to go. And the homeless, talking at NADOC the other day, homeless is also, is caused by the amount of domestic violence at home and children that are leaving home to get away from mum and dad through the domestic violence in the house. So I think this is growing in Cessnock pretty bad. And between the twelve of us and the mayor and the staff, these things we should be trying to do. And just to say one thing to councillor Judd, at NADOC on Saturday, I did see your little notice on the board saying about the safe toilets in Cessnock required. So Tom did have it up there. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you Mayor Saval. And those microphones are loud, I'll try and talk quietly. I just really want to, I think this is a great idea. I think this is a really awesome thing to support wherever we can. We have the highest per capita rate concerning domestic violence, I'm pretty sure, in Australia. If not New South Wales, it's up there. The, we've got some amazing services in our area, Kerry's Place, that, having worked in this space for quite some time, you know, there's such a high need on the ground. And to have consortiums in place, to have not just not-for-profit organisations, but levels of government in place so we can actually do something positive together, provide funding where we need to for these organisations, because it is such, it's an epidemic in our area. And the more light that we can shine in the subject, the better, the more education we can provide, even for the fact of the services that are out there. There's mention of Kerry's Place. I mean, not many people actually know that they can supply housing for men as well where it comes up. So the more discussions that happen like this, the better, the more meetings, the more action, because that's where we need action. So that's what I'm hoping from this, there's actual action here, because it is an epidemic. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillors, for your support on this item. I think it's something that, it's not something that one level of government or just the community sector can address on their own. I think this is something that needs to be a whole of community and a whole of government approach to eradicating domestic and family violence. And I think we as council need to make sure we play our part. So with that, I'll put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Moving on to motions of urgency. No motions of urgency. Moving on to report PE fifteen twenty twenty four. Someone moving the recommendation that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Grine, speaking on that. No, all those in favour? Councillors Moore's, Burke, Grine, Sanders, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval. Those against councillors Hill and Judd. I'll declare carried. Report CC forty twenty twenty four. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Hawkins, speaking on that. No, councillor Judd.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just got a quick question. When this come up on council's Facebook page about them wanting to change the zoning from community land to operational plan, I did ask why? Do we know why we want to change it from community to operational land when it's a drainage area?
Yep. Director.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Councillor Judd, I think it's important to clarify that just not changing the zoning of the land is changing the classification, or sorry, it is actually applying a classification to newly acquired land. So the land that is coming to council as part of a development approval, part of the developers' requirements was that they need to put the infrastructure in and apply a certain amount of land or dedicate a certain amount of land to council for a drainage reserve. The act then says council has to elect to either classify it as operational or community land. So this is about classifying the land as operational land or community land, not the zoning of the actual parcel.
Yes, yeah, yeah, no, I do understand that, we might have called it the wrong thing with the zoning. But my question is, why would we not keep it as community land? Why would we put it as operational? Because community land can't be sold, but operational land can be, is that right?
Director.
Thank you. Any decision to dispose of council land has to be a council resolution. Council has in the past gone through a process and reclassified land from community to operational to allow the disposal of it. This report, as it is up tonight, is about actually applying categorisation that is effective of, not effective, representative of what the land is. So it's not changing anything because we've only just acquired the land and as I said, council has to elect to classify it as one or the other.
I'm sorry, a little confused by your answer. The land currently is community land, is that right?
No, the land is not classified. So the land is unclassified land. When it's recently been dedicated to council, we have to apply a classification to it. And so we either have to choose community or choose operational land. And the recommendation in regards to this is about recommending it be operational land because that serves the best purpose and the best ease of management as a drainage reserve. So it's not about proposing anything for sale or any of that. This is about managing the drainage reserve and its best allocation of land.
Okay, I didn't read that in the report, okay, thank you.
Councillor Moore's.
Thank you, Mayor. I went out and seen a few of the resident people on this in Bellbird. They were concerned. They thought it was going to be residential, changed to residential, which for sure it is not. To my full understanding, this land is in a flood area at Bellbird. As long as I've been in Bellbird fifty-odd years, it was always flooded in that area. And this land is going to be only for drainage purpose only, for operational, correct? Director.
The director.
Thank you, Mayor Saval, yes, that is the intention of, the land is dedicated to councillor's drainage reserve. And as we stated, it's a classification of the land that council's considering tonight, not the zoning of the land.
Okay, thank you, I'm happy with that, thank you. So with no further debate, we'll put the item, those in favour, councillors Moore's, Burke, Grine, Sanders, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten and Saval. Those against councillor Judd, I'll declare carried. Now moving on to report CC forty-two twenty twenty four, moving that way. Yes, so moving the amended thing to note, the date is the fourteenth of September. Councillor Hill's moving that way, seconded councillor Painter. There's any debate in this item? No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Report WI seventeen twenty twenty four. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sanders. Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. I just got a, I'm a little confused on actually what this report is and I didn't get a chance to ring...
We might just pause.
Yeah, sorry. Damn phones. Oh, yeah, I was actually going to ring who did the report to ask a few questions on it, but I didn't get a chance to. So at the moment, this land's all got its little subcategories, hasn't it, to manage the land, is that right? Do you, if you understand what I'm asking?
So this is about the generic plan of management. So plan of managements are in place for certain specific passes of land, have their own plan of management. And this covers a number of passes of land that don't have their own plan of management. It's just the generic one that covers...
Is it kind of like what we did with Popat Hill Park?
Popat Head Park, one was a standalone plan of management for the management of that site. And this one is, as it's called, a generic community use one, the generic plan of management, which covers in the report that lists all of the properties that are listed, a lot of which are generic reserves or parks or historical, whether it's community halls, different things like that, that don't have their own specific...
I just ask my question the way I've got it in my head. So when it come to Popat Hill Park, because that's the reference that I'm going to use, when I spoke to Kate about it, it was saying that it made it easier to keep the maintenance up, to do different things to the land and that. So what the report tonight is basically saying, we're going to put all these into one category and have one master plan, basically, is that right?
So, yeah, I'll defer to the director.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Saval. Thanks for the question councillor Judd. It aims to identify the ongoing maintenance, future use, potential use of portions of council and Crown-owned land. It doesn't provide a master plan, a master plan's separate to that. What it does do is it allows for the ability for council to seek future funding for improvements and or maintenance for certain use of those properties and council-owned land.
Okay, so basically just make it a little bit easier, fine-tune it sort of thing? Yeah?
Yes.
And in regards to, when you apply for grants or when you apply for funding, they want to see that it matches towards a strategy or a plan that council has previously adopted.
Yeah, okay, that makes a lot more sense. One last question, is it normal? I just have a little question, it's going to be a little bit controversial, but I just want to see if this is normally what something would be in there, where it says about the Aboriginal land rights, seeks the compensation of the Aboriginal people for past disbursement. Disbursement, I hope that's the right word. Is that normally what we would have in most of our plans when it comes to down-to-the-risk stuff? It just was a little bit of a statement that I was just checking.
Director.
Sorry, thank you through you, Mayor Saval. Councillor Judd, do you mind if I take that on notice? There is a requirement through the Crown Lands Act to recognise that, but I'll take that on notice and get some information back.
Thank you.
Okay, no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour, unanimous. Moving on to report WI nineteen twenty twenty four, it's of the traffic committee, moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Hawkins. Councillor Judd.
Just a quick question. With this report, it says about the Colburn Road, just get up the page, about there being a bit of an issue with not knowing where they're going to put the giveaway sign due to it not being up to, like the developer hasn't gave them all the information just yet. Will that come back to traffic, the traffic committee?
I can answer that one in that the answer is yes, it will. And it already has come to the next traffic committee. So it will come back to the next council meeting.
Awesome. One other quick question, while we're talking about that, because I got it, we got an email, most of you would have all got the email about, from residents on that road. Will this, will the Hunter Water, well, was it Hunter Water that's going through there?
Hunter Transmission Project.
Yeah, so that's going to go through there, is that going to affect the road?
The, do you want to, I'll refer to the director on that one.
Thank you through you, Mayor Saval, thanks for the question councillor Judd. We're in early stages of communication with Energy Co who's... We're in early, early stages of communication with Energy Co, who's, who's the developer slash deliverer of the Honey Transmission Project. And at this stage, we don't understand full details around the impacts on the Colburn Mountains Road, but we're working with them to identify what that might be.
Okay, awesome, I just wanted to make sure because that road is extremely scary. Thank you.
Councillor Moore's.
The road that you're talking about, Colburn Mountain, where we went up that last week, the director of infrastructure myself and had a look at the road. We went straight to the top and it is very scary. There's been five cars go over the side and two weeks before, one went that way. And then when we were coming back down, the director said, big hole in the fence there. And then when we got to the bottom at Tinklers, they were talking to them, the locals, and they said, car went straight through it at the weekend. So it is a scary road, but they are just at the beginning of talking with the electrical mob. So there's, I reckon there's two years before they even get there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Moving on to, wait for councillor Judd to leave on this one. Okay, now moving to report WI twenty 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 four, the tender for the landfill extension. Moving that way councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Hill. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. Unanimous, if we just let councillor Judd know. Okay, we'll now call for report WI twenty one twenty twenty four, intersection. So we've called for report WI twenty one twenty twenty four, the intersection of Cooper and Charlton Streets into remediation. Someone moving the recommendation. No one moving the recommendation. Not with that, that item has lapsed. We'll now move to councillors' reports, are there any councillor reports?